Second.
Second by Ms. Palmer. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries seven zero. Good evening, welcome back. It's our first school board meeting since school has started. And I thank Deputy Paget for joining us this evening and a reminder to silence your cellphones. And if we could all rise for the Pledge of Allegiance, Ms. Shelley, could you lead us?
With allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We have no public hearing this evening, and I'd like to go to Ms. Shelley.
It is with much sadness that I ask for you to join me in a moment of silence for Wilderness First Grader Cameron Gomez-McMillan. He lost his battle with cancer on September 10th. He will be greatly missed. Our thoughts are with his family in this time of sorrow.
Thank you, Ms. Shelley. And we'll move on to the consent agenda. Item eight, Dr. Martin.
On the consent agenda this evening are the minutes of the August 14th, 2017 regular meeting, donations which are used when customary, and approval of memorandums of agreement between the Executive Directive Head Start and the Spotsylvania County Public School Board, SCPS Head Start and SCPS Office of Transportation Services, SCPS Head Start and SCPS Health Services, SCPS Head Start and SCPS Early Childhood Special Education, and SES/SPS Virginia Preschool Initiative, and SCPS Head Start, and SCPS Head Start and Virginia Polytechnic Institute and State University for its Virginia Cooperative Extension. Staff asks that the consent agenda be approved as presented.
We have a motion to approve the consent agenda as presented.
Don't so move, Madam Chair.
Second.
Motion by Dr. Myers, second by Mr. Blaine. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries seven zero. Please note the informational items and the Commonwealth Governor's School, the Head Start items, and the items for the October 9th board meeting. And we'll move on to item 10, instructional highlight, Mrs. Flannard.
Good evening, Madam Chair, members of the board, Dr. Baker and Dr. Martin. This evening in commemoration of September 11th, to honor our first responders and our fallen heroes, as well as the family and friends impacted by 9/11, the Spotsylvania County Orchestra Directors will be performing two patriotic pieces. The Star Spangled Banner, words by Francis Scott Key, music by John Stafford Smith, arranged
Well, thank you for that lovely performance. And we'll move on to item 11, recognitions and awards. Mrs. Flannard.
Thank you. Our Summer Superintendent Art Award winner is Ariel Laney Robinson. If Laney could come forward, please. Ms. Robinson is from Massaponix High School, and her artwork hung in the superintendent's office from June until mid-August. And her art teacher is Mary Lou Kramer. If she could If we have any family or friends that are here to support Laney, if you could stand
Ms. Flannard, can you move on to 11.02, Board of Education Excellence Award recipient?
Yes, ma'am. At this time, we would like Principal Shawn Hudson and any staff from Chancellor Elementary School to please come forward to be recognized.[726.51][726.51][applause] We are excited to share that Chancellor Elementary has received the Board of Education Excellence Award, the second-tier honor in the Virginia Index of Performance Awards. Chancellor Elementary was one of 145 schools that met all state and federal benchmarks and made positive growth towards the goals of the governor and the board. Chancellor Elementary has consecutively received the Virginia Board of Education designation since 2008. This is the 12th time that Chancellor Elementary has received the Virginia Board of Excellence Award. Congratulations on receiving this distinguished honor.[773.75][773.75][applause]
Mrs. Flannard, we'll move on to 11.03, V E B A Outstanding New Business and Information Technology Teacher of the Year Award winner, please.
Thank you. We are pleased to share that Kristy Rice, Spotsylvania High Business Teacher, is the recipient of this year's Virginia Education Business Association's Outstanding New Business and Information Technology Teacher Award. Ms. Rice received the award at the V E B A Summer Conference. Recipients of this award must have made significant contributions toward innovative, unique, and novel programs, and have shown a professional commitment early in their careers. Congratulations, Ms. Rice, and thank you for your dedication.[885.25][885.25][applause]
And 11.04, Association of School Business Officials.
Thank you. We are pleased to share that Mrs. LaShawn Gaines, CFO, was selected as the ASBO International 2017 Distinguished Eagle Award recipient. She will be presented the award at the ASBO's annual meeting and expo on September 23rd. The award is a reflection of Mrs. Gaines' positive impact on students and the division through her leadership and service. Congratulations, Mrs. Gaines, on being selected.[929.02][929.02][applause]
11.05, Cadet Recognition.
Thank you. At this time, we would like to invite the following cadets to please come forward. Cadets Alexander Childress, Precious Dupree, Matthew Grosskopf, Austin Poole, Brandy Roberts, Rayanne C., Alex Bouchard, and Anthony Vi. The 4th Brigade Army JROTC hosted a Science, Technology, Engineering, and Mathematics Leadership Academy this past summer from June 25th through July 1st at Virginia Tech. The academy was designed to increase awareness and interest in STEM and their career opportunities, and foster academic competencies in specific STEM fields. Cadets participated in selective programs and experienced interactions with scientists, engineers, and technicians who are designing innovative solutions for tomorrow's challenges. Only 120 participants were selected. The Spotsylvania Knight Battalion sent four cadets who successfully completed this training. And if you could raise your hand, want to call your name. Cadets Alexander Childress, Matthew Grosskopf, Rayanne C., and Anthony Vi.[1031.22][1031.22][applause] Also, approximately 418 high school students enrolled in Army JROTC programs at 30 schools nationwide arrived at Camp Wilcox on Fort AP Hill for the 2017 JCLC Mountain, held on June 25th through July 1st, ready to test the limits for their endurance, their stamina, and their leadership capabilities. On average, each school brings about 10 cadets. However, Spotsylvania High, the Knight Battalion, brought 25. The following cadets won awards at camp awards received at JCLC. And if you could raise your hand as I acknowledge you, please. The three best squads at drill, third-place Alpha Company, 1st Platoon, 3rd Squadron, each certificate, Brandy Roberts, Spotsylvania High School.[1089.11][1089.11][applause] First-place Charlie Company, certificate, medal, coin, Alex Bouchard, Spotsylvania High School.[1101.25][1101.25][applause] Distinguished cadets, at three cadets per company who are in the top 6% of JCLC Mountain Attendees Certificate and trophies, A Company Cadets, Precious Dupree, Spotsylvania High Mastery of JCLC objectives, the first-place winners in each company are the top four cadets or the top 1% at JCLC Mountain Certificate and trophies. Number four cadet from Charlie Company, Cadet Austin Poole, Spotsylvania High School.[1140.08][1140.08][applause]
Now moving on to item 12, public comments. Dr. Martin.
Good evening. The public comments segment of our board meetings is a time to receive recommendations, suggestions, concerns, and comments from the general public. Each speaker is allotted five minutes, and we ask that they clearly state the name, address, and/or voting district for the board. A speaker may request additional time from the board should one's five-minute allotment expire. We ask that you keep your comments focused on the issues, and that all speakers maintain a love of the quorum and mutual respect for one another. Madam Chair, we do not have any speakers signed up on the list right now.
Is there anybody in the audience who did not sign up that would like to address the board? Seeing none, we will move to special reports. 13.01, Board Committee Reports. Any board member would like to submit a Board Committee report? Mr. Blaine.
One of the important parts of our educational program here is to develop skills among our students that are more and more in demand throughout the country all the time. And our current tech center is hard at work at that and has been doing so for some time now. And in fact, the last two years, the Skills USA competition for statewide was held here in Fredericksburg. And our current tech center right now is preparing for the October 2nd Skills USA Day at the state fair. So they're hard at it already and making great progress. And in addition to that, also participating at the state fair is the FCC LA Student Group who will be working along the lines with the current tech center. So, thank you, folks, and be very proud of this particular section of our academic instruction program.
Any other Board Committee Report? I would like to let you guys know that we had the first meeting of the School Board Advisory Committee, organizational meeting. We have a wonderful group of volunteers participate in that, and appointees. And they have their second meeting on September 25th at 6:00 PM. And they will be doing a little more organization, but then start serving in their roles to advise us. So that will be a very exciting thing. Any more Board Committee Reports? Okay, we will move on to 13.02, Mrs. Flannard, Instructional Updates and Accountability.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen of the board and our audience. Before we begin, I appreciate Ms. Flannard allowing me to tag-team with her this evening. And I'll explain a little bit why in just a moment. But before we begin what will be a brief, but hopefully substantial presentation on where we stand right now in terms of our instructional performance across the school division, I'd really like everybody that is still left in the room to stand, including the school board.
Stretch it out.
There's no reason. I just wanted you to... No, I'm just kidding. No, I had everyone stand because what we're going to talk about really is about our mission as a school division, which is together. Begins with together, and whether you are a school board member, a division leader, a principal, an administrator, a teacher, another support staff member, a parent, a student, a business partner, you all have a stake, and you are all involved in any success, anything that we described tonight in terms of our division performance that is positive. We owe it to every single person in this room and beyond. So thank you for representing your particular stakeholder group as you stand. Thank you.
So this evening, we are going to provide an update to the board and the community regarding our continuous instructional improvement, as well as our current achievement data, and finally, our next step with state-level changes and accountability measures.
The way that we're going to proceed tonight, and I am prone to trying to break up information into stories, so we really have a three-part story tonight. One is what we intend to accomplish as a school division and how we try to do that. The second part will really be about our results. And then the third part of the story will be what's next, and how are we intending to move forward? So as the various images come up on the screen, it begins with our strategic plan, our division plan. And everything that you see popping up are other supports, other alignment, structures, and plans that we have tried to intentionally build over the last five years to support the most important work that we do on behalf of our students each and every day. And the reason that we display this first is because anything that happens, we try to make sure, especially if it's positive, that it happens by design, that it doesn't happen by accident. Though we're always glad when we're fortunate for something good to happen, and sometimes it is the sheer talent and the good work that we have by our people in the school division. And that goes without saying, we have wonderful people. But we also try as a school system to be very intentional, very systemic in our approaches, and to make sure, again, going back to our mission, is that we are doing it together and as a team, and that we keep everyone on the same page. So centering us is our division plan, but all those other plans align. Over the last 10 to 12 years, our school division's student population has become what I would refer to as beautifully diverse. We have more and more students that come with a different range of needs. Our population, in terms of our minority population, has grown from about 25% to over 40%. And as you know, we have increasingly economically disadvantaged students since the Great Recession and on, increasing Hispanic population and students who speak English as a second language. And so, we talk here about that our... We don't view it as a problem that we have challenged students and that we have challenges to overcome. We view it as an opportunity. And so, how we reach our students is really the question. We can't necessarily do it the way we've done it in the past. We must adapt and adjust our approaches to meet the needs. And you see here, which is, again, the center part of our, in our teaching and learning framework we're going to talk about in a second, you can see that these are the types of skills that we want our students to leave us with, to develop while they're in school, regardless of content knowledge, that they come away with the ability to communicate and collaborate, to critically think and problem-solve, and to develop their own sense of a positive identity and a sense of self. So, I think it's been Mr. Braswell that said, "This is how we do it." If he could have put it to music, we'd have a little theme song, you know, playing right now. But I think, two or three years ago, I really asked Ms. Flannard to work with the instructional team, and she and the team behind me has done an outstanding job in bringing to life this concept of a framework, not as a symbolic gesture of what we'd like to be as a educational organization, but really, how do we want to distinguish ourselves in terms of how we serve our students in the classroom? And so, we're going to kind of break this out, but this is really our way of operationalizing and defining what teaching and learning looks like, or should look like, what we strive for each and every day in our classrooms throughout the school division.
So we're going to begin with the, what we passionately call the fans. And we're going to begin with the blue fan, the instructional planning. And so, our team has worked, along with teacher leaders and along with a lot of our specialists, to really ensure that our curriculum development involves root, ground, in the trenches, people that are really doing that work. And the curriculum development and alignment of that curriculum has really started pre-K through 12. And it has been an amazing task, and one that is continuing to evolve. But it has really allowed us to see and align our approaches. And in one of those approaches, we'll talk to, about in a little bit later, and it has to do with literacy. The second bullet, our learning intentions and success criteria, really talks about the professional learning that we've been provided to the administrators, as well as our teacher leaders and our coaches, so that we can really make sure that our students are aware and making that visible, that learning visible to our students. And the third bullet really is about how we're using technology, not to buy technology for technology's sake, but what is the actual learning intention, and then what tool do we have that aligns that intention? It's very purposeful, targeted use of instructional technology. Continuing around the fan, we have the pedagogy fan. And that really refers to the Integrated Literacy Strategies. It was one of the planning documents that Dr. Baker mentioned. And this planning document has really provided a framework for our literacy instruction, pre-K through 12. And it has been developed so far, we have completed the reading and the writing component, and the writing component is... and the writing component will be coming alive this year. I think the beauty of this document is that when we talk about making sure we have a guaranteed viable curriculum for our students regardless of which classroom they go, this is a guiding document for best practice in literacy regardless of grade level, so that we can ensure that our students have that number-one skill of literacy to be able to access all of their learning.
If I might, teaching is, especially those of you that have taught, is one of the most wonderful things you can ever do and one of the most challenging things that you can ever do. And I think one of the things that this framework is helping to do, especially the professional learning that's being provided with it, is not so much about adding on top of all the other things that teachers have to think about, but a lot of it is to stop doing things that we know don't work. An example of what doesn't work is exactly what Ms. Flannard and I are doing right now to you, which is we are providing a PowerPoint and we are lecturing you, in a sense, on our school division. And we know that retention is going to be minimal in terms of this presentation, especially the longer that I talk. So we are trying to make sure that in terms of high-yield strategies, not so much that there has to be so much more that teachers do, but that what they do be most effective to reach the students and their learning needs.
In the area of assessment, we're really working on that backwards design model, making sure that our students have real-world problems, that they can utilize that collaboration and the critical thinking skills in order to manage those problems and work through them instead of that multiple-choice test. It also is in response to the state removing some of the SOL tests at the elementary and the middle school level specifically. And we also are, have purchased some digital tools such as Scholastic Reading Inventory and STAR at the middle school level specifically to support literacy instruction, as well as IXL and Reflex Math, to provide feedback to our students and to inform instructional practices for our teachers.
Again, as a reminder, the curriculum that we seek to bring to life in our classrooms every day is about learning intentions, learning objectives and outcomes. It is not a textbook. It is not a tool. All the tools, including these that Ms. Flannard has just highlighted, are tools that, thanks to you as the school board, we have been able to purchase and provide that support to our schools. It's not necessarily one tool, but it's the combination of those tools used in concert that we really believe helps to, again, bring that learning alive in our classrooms. Back in 2015-16, one of the educational issues of our time right now, both in research and kind of in a crusade manner across the nation, is this notion of equity. And we, as a school division, had a committee that worked with principals. And over the course of that 2015-16 school year, we came up with a, well, we defined equity for Spotsylvania County Public Schools. And there are many different ways that people define equity. We have defined it simply as providing our students with what they need, with the distinction being what they need, not necessarily providing them with an opportunity, not necessarily providing all with the same thing, but providing what our students need, which has implications for individuals and different groups of students. And some of the ways that we do that is by being clear about the things that will help students to focus on learning. Positive Behavior Intervention Support is one program that we have in almost all of our schools, and we're continuing to help keep students focused on their learning rather than being out of the classroom due to behavior concerns. And we're also exploring things like restorative justice. And we have many of our principals in schools that are developing alternative means in the areas of discipline and intervention for students when they get in trouble or when they're having difficulties, with the intention of any sort of behavior modification or disciplinary measure to be to change the behavior, not necessarily to remove the student from the learning. So this pursuit of equity, again, as you will hear, has real implications for how we design our learning environments across the school division.
Dr. Baker mentioned it beautifully when he talked about equity as giving our students what it is they need. And in order to do that, we really need to look at personalizing their learning. And personalizing their learning is through small-group instruction or through learning stations or centers. And we also started a program last year with the use of instructional technology as a pilot at Post Oak Middle and Spotsylvania High School, so that our students could have more access to the Internet at home. And so it's looking at what does our students need and how can we better provide that for them. And we are looking to develop this year a student mentoring program that connects the community with our students and allows them to have mentors within and outside of our four walls, so to speak. And then finally, when we think about our virtual learning, our virtual learning program is now expanded to K through 5. It also still does include our credit recovery as well as unit recovery, and it does continue to involve our new courses for students that would like to work ahead, they have that opportunity to. Learning Environment Continued. As you may recall, the state has also included some competencies for coding for our elementary students. So we have a pilot program, I'm happy to say, at Courthouse Road Elementary that we're calling Libraries 2.0. And you can see that those are some of the technologies that are there, and we are teaching our students, our elementary students, to code, that someday that they can continue to grow and evolve. And eventually, we can continue to start to add programs such as cybersecurity, and we will have trained our students already ready to go and be, have those skills and be ready to tackle the future.
Over the next few slides, oftentimes, when, and we are, there is a requirement in the standards of quality that we present publicly our results as it pertains to accountability and accreditation. We, as a school division, do not view accountability in a tiny, narrow vacuum of just SOL results. So some of what we're going to highlight is that we look at learning in a number of different ways, and we are trying to become increasingly adept at being able to measure students' learning ongoing, incrementally, routinely, rather than waiting until the end of the year, which sometimes is referred to as an autopsy, rather than an actual intervention. So as we look at the performance highlights, you're going to note that one of the things that we have really tried over the last couple of years is to, as a division, get ahead on early literacy. Our students increasingly come to us. We have a diverse range of abilities when our students begin kindergarten. We have some students who come in ready to read. We have some students who come to kindergarten who have not even worked with letters and have had very little exposure to print. And so these assessments through our Fountas and Pennell, our literacy program, Benchmark Literacy, the elementary level, if you look at this chart, you're seeing that just in one year, we are seeing more of our students meeting and approaching the reading levels, the grade-level reading. And it's good to see that in just one year. But this is as important to us, especially early on, making sure that as literacy is truly, you know, the gateway to all other learning, that we continue to meet the needs of our students before they get to middle and secondary education. And so this is just one example of the ways that we're measuring their performance ongoing. This is just a snapshot. Over the last five years, this shows you the progress our school division has made in on-time graduation rate. Again, that's not just a high school event. That is something that we all have to work on as a system. We've seen over the last three years, a bit of a plateau, once we moved up several points over those first few years. But this year, the 90.41, again, preliminary until it comes out, I think in about a week or two, the 90.41 will be the highest on-time graduation rate that we have achieved thus far. It is not even close to what we expect. Our goal over the next three to five years would to see that, would be to see that on-time graduation rate be at 95% or above.
You may recall this slide, that this was during Mr. Wolf's presentation of Career and Tech last May. I did want to remind the Board just the progress that our Career and Technical Assessment data really magnifies for our students. I will acknowledge for the Board that this is actually one-year-old data. The Career and Tech results are actually a year behind. So this data is actually a year old. We do not have the current data. But you can clearly see, according to the benchmark, that Spotsylvania County is surpassing that benchmark. And moving on, again, one more additional performance assessment data for Career and Technical Education is, once again, the benchmarks that are laid before us we are continuing to surpass. The English Language Learners do have an assessment that is now called ACCESS 2.0, and that is a more robust test than previously noted. So it is important to know that the rigor of the ACCESS test has significantly increased, which you will see is the proficiency. Proficiency means that our students that have taken the ACCESS test have passed that test, so to speak, and are no longer requiring English language services. So for Spotsylvania County in 2016, we had a 16.1% passing, and 2017, we did note a slight decline of 1%. However, and I actually looked it up today to make sure it was accurate, because the state realized a significant decline on their pass results. Comparatively, we are doing okay. I expect us to continue to rise in that area. In the area of reading SOLs, our L students have increased by 1%. Mathematics maintained. And at this time, I do not have the federal graduation index for our L students.
Going back to the pursuit of equity, Advanced Placement Courses at the high school level are intended to be, in some folks' eyes, the gold standard in terms of the highest level of a curriculum that a student can access in preparation for college, in the intensity of it. And then to have that certified, so to speak, with their participation and hopefully passing the end of the Advanced Placement Course exam. We have intentionally tried to increase our enrollment in Advanced Placement Courses, believing that more and more of our students are quite capable of accessing and handling that level of rigor. And what you're able to see in terms of our student participation since 2012 is a significant increase in the number of students that are now accessing it. Still not where we want in terms of both overall and also in terms of the diversity of our students. We want to see more students who may come from environments where that's not necessarily a push-at-home, or students who come from an economically disadvantaged or minority background, and that is not necessarily something that is forefront in their mind, that as a system, we can become better at grabbing those students and pushing them forward versus waiting for them to access an opportunity that they're not even sure at this point that they can access or that they can be successful with. So we're seeing some real progress there. And you can see the increase in the participation of the exams, too, which both have a cost to them, as well as the pressure of that. But we're seeing, again, an increase. Now, when you do increase both participation and the numbers of students taking those exams, there's a greater strain on your resources, on your teachers, and on the students themselves. So while we are not seeing perhaps the substantial growth in the percentage of students that are passing the AP exams, we are still above the national level. And we are, again, seeing that we're able to have more and more students without a sharp decline in the percentage of students that are passing it. But again, something that we are proud of in terms of the direction that we're going.
Dr. Baker has given me the honor to do the required components for the state accountability. And I will remind the Board, as well as the community, that we currently have nine reporting categories. Three of them are called gap groups. Gap Group 1 contains students with disabilities, English language learners, as well as economically disadvantaged students. Gap Group 2 consists of Black students, not of Hispanic origin. And Gap Group 3 is Hispanic students. Additionally, the other five reporting categories, students with disabilities, our L students, our economically disadvantaged students, our white students, our Asian students, and of course, the category called "all." So Virginia's current accountability system has a sanction that is called, currently has to do with our Title I schools. And in priority, the priority status indicates the bottom 10% of Title I schools across the entire state. If they have low performance in all students, they take the lowest performing and they consider those title schools priority. The next 5% lowest-performing schools in the gap groups are called Focus Schools. The Board will recall that last year, Riverview Elementary was identified as a focus school.
I asked Ms. Flannard to share those, as well as some of the other detailed slides on the accountability standards, sometimes what I have referred to, that this is not the time for such commentary, but the reform chaos that we have found ourselves in for quite a while. But I also wanted the opportunity to observe all of your eyes glazing and your head spinning as she attempts to help you decipher all of that. So imagine how, again, the practitioners and the teachers and the principals feel with all of those different things. I think there's always going to be the question is, what does it ultimately yield? Well, as educational leaders, we have to keep the focus where it needs to be, which is on the individual children. And we can put them in individual subgroups, but many of them are in a group all their own, which is a combination of all of that, which makes them the individuals. And so we continue to try to serve the needs of the whole child. And an example of that is, we've had two schools over the last four years that have gone into this focus status. And both of them, including this year Riverview, after only one year, in what is a required two-year status, regardless of how you perform the following year, they basically blew the lid off of the performance metrics the very next year. And Riverview Elementary will be fully accredited next year, or is fully accredited this year.[1573.26][1573.26](APPLAUSE). So I would say that represented focus. And even though we will continue to be in this status, and just like Spotswood, I have no doubt that in a year, we will have no schools in that focus category.
And just to remind the Board, as well as the community, those are the benchmarks that our schools have to achieve in order to meet state accreditation. So English across the board, 3 through 12, is 75%, and all the others are 70%.
Wanted to break down when the new standards really came into effect, and you began to see not only our school division, but statewide, many schools that had been fully accredited in school divisions that had had all their schools fully accredited over a period of years, suddenly, everyone was no longer, you know, holding that performance because they were under brand-new, more rigorous standards, and that was measured through more rigorous state-level assessments. So giving you this snapshot enables you to see that regardless of individual years, over the last three years, you were able to see that the performance has increased and sustained, really, in each area. This slide that you're looking at is the English reading SOL data, and you can see the pass rates, which are the federal pass rates on the left side, and then the state pass rates, which they do not break those down or disaggregate. These are our metrics. These are our, we have basically come up with this average, and looking at all of the state adjustments for the division, the state does not provide us with that. But that means that in some of our schools, there are students who are counted against their pass rate for the federal, but in the state level, if we have not been able to serve them, or they are in a status such as they are learning English as a second language, that there may be some adjustments to their scores. But regardless, as you go down all of those different subgroups that we're responsible for, you can see that there has been an increase in every area, though we'd like to see more. We're not there yet. We have been able to get those increases through the good work of our teachers, our leaders, and all of the folks that support instruction throughout the division. And so this is reading.
Some highlights in the area of reading is 53% of our elementary schools showed an increase in the reading SOL performance. 48% of our schools overall also received an increase in reading performance. And as a division, we either increased or maintained in every of those reporting categories. Grade 4, on the other hand, did go up in all nine categories, and grade 5 increased seven out of the nine reporting categories. We also had significant reading goals, gains, that I'd like to note. And as Dr. Baker mentioned, Riverview Elementary knocked it out of the park with a 13% increase in reading, as well as Courthouse with a 6%, and Cedar Forest Chancellor Elementary and Chancellor Middle with a 5%. I would like to note that the Board will recall that Chancellor Middle School was in a warning situation last year in the area of reading, and their 5% increase have made them fully accredited as well.[1778.71][1778.71](APPLAUSE). And you can also note that there are several schools that had increases in all reporting categories.
So you can see a similar trend with our math SOL data, that we... So you can see a similar trend with our math SOL data, that we really have made a change from being slightly below the state average back in 2014 to being slightly ahead of the state average over the last few years. And we have been able to sustain that performance. And while we're not providing you with every bit of data throughout the state, I will note that there comes a point when resources stay constant, and yet our performance is still expected to improve, that being able to not only maintain but slightly bump up is quite a credit to a school division as large as ours. And it is actually, it enables us to stay ahead of some folks throughout the state who have seen their performance not only begin to plateau but to begin to decline. So again, I credit our staff with being able to not only get to this point but to be able to sustain it.
Some significant gains in math and science collectively is, once again, you're going to hear the name Riverview Elementary quite a bit this evening. Riverview had a 7% increase in math, and they had actually a significant increase in every reporting category in math. Livingston and Riverbend High School had a 6% increase in math. Battlefield Middle had an increase in all but one of the categories of math. And Cedar Forest had a 5% increase in science. And Salem had a 4% increase in science.
So the social studies data really bears the same thing, and you will see that both in the social studies and science. And I'll let Ms. Flannard share with you some of the other individual accolades.
Four schools gained in all subcategories. Riverview, Battlefield Middle, Chancellor High, and Spotsylvania High. I would like to also note that Riverview's social studies gains was 23%, which is really unbelievable. And social studies was one of the areas that they were warned in last year, so that gain is significant. Brock Road had a 17% increase. Salem had an 11% increase. Cortland, 9%. And Berkeley Elementary, 7%.
At this point, is it okay, you all probably just see her grinning ear to ear. Go ahead and stand up, Ms. Cunningham.
Cunningham.
Yeah. I, again, credit Ms. Cunningham and her staff for the incredible work that they did over this last year. But I also credit many of the folks in this room that also provided support. And I know Ms. Cunningham is not only, you know, full force ahead, but she's also one that is very collaborative. And she has taken every bit of knowledge and support that she could get, not only from the division level but from her colleagues. And so, again, I think that the team approach is not only what gets us all through, but it's what gets individual schools through as well. And again, this is the science data. We did see a drop-off from 16 to 17, from 82 to 80, but we are still able to hold an increase since, again, the new standards came about in 14. And writing was a division-wide focus, especially this last year, where we had a substantial increase division-wide of over 3%. So you can see that focus in the increases. And in particular, when we start seeing almost double-digit increases in some of our subgroups, such as students with disabilities, we know that we're making a difference, and these are essential skills for our students to be successful beyond school.
And some of our acknowledgements in the area of writing, as Dr. Baker said, the division as a whole made tremendous gains. Battlefield Middle increased in all subgroups. Ny River Middle increased in all subgroups. Chancellor Middle had a double-digit gains of 14%, which goes to part of their achieving a full accreditation. Battlefield Middle realized a double-digit gain of 10%. And Spotsy High increased 5%.
Think that this snapshot should tell you a whole lot about the system-wide focus that we've had and how close we are over just a three-to-four-year period of going from having just 66% of our schools fully accredited under the new standards to now being almost knocking on that door at 100%. And our one school that is not quite there yet is only missing it by about four percentage points in one area, which is reading. And in this last year, that school did see some improvement in both math and reading.
As a division, our state accreditation highlights is all schools have met the GCI or Graduation Completion Index of 80 points, 85 points for the state. As Dr. Baker mentioned earlier, we have realized a 90.41% on-time graduation rate. Twenty-eight of our 29 schools are accredited, fully accredited, in the area of English, and 29 out of 29 schools are fully accredited in the area of mathematics.
This is a graphic that I know not only have you seen, many of you witnessed this when you go to the various senior awards assemblies, but to be able to see the kinds of support our students are receiving through their work, through their accomplishments and achievements in high school, even in areas where there may not seem to be that kind of support. To see that increase over time in this amount of scholarships that are being offered to our students, again, speaks to, again, the quality of the education our students are receiving as well as the quality of our students themselves. And oftentimes, I know, as school board members, you will want to know, we're preparing our students for career and college readiness. What does that look like in terms of their intentions post-high school? And this is, again, what they report back to us in terms of their goals or their next steps. And again, you can see that the majority still are pursuing a two- or four-year college degree. But again, we have a percentage that go into the military, and also more and more of our students coming out with industry certifications and credentialing are able to go right out and be gainfully employed.
So moving forward, what is our next steps as a school division? Well, first is, we have a new program called ESSA, and they bring some new accountability. So ESSA actually stands for Every Student Succeeds Act, and it was signed into law in 2015, December 2015, to replace No Child Left Behind. ESSA provided the flexibility for states to develop and implement within the guidelines that they set, the long-term and interim measures of progress to identify schools. So Virginia's plan has been submitted to the federal government, and now we are waiting to determine whether or not that plan has been fully accepted. We have been given highlights of the plan, and so I will attempt to walk you through some of those highlights. It is a bit, an 80-page document that I tried to break down into a nice chart. So on the left-hand column, you will see that those are some of the requirements from Every Student Succeeds Act. And on the right side is Virginia's proposal to that requirement. So at first, you have ESSA requires an academic achievement. Virginia's proposal to that is SOL tests in the area of reading and mathematics. ESSA is also allowing growth for elementary and middle schools. Virginia has proposed a table that, for the first time, will allow students that potentially had a 320 on a reading SOL and now has a 360 on that same reading SOL. That growth is proposed to be measured to our credit. So hopefully, that will go forward, that it will be the first time for that. Graduation rates, Virginia's response is Federal Graduation Indicator. To remind the board that Federal Graduation Indicator includes two diplomas, the Advanced Studies Diploma and the Standard Diploma. It does not include our modified or students with disabilities. So that is a much more rigorous measure, and I would just like to remind the board of that rigorous measure. The progress for our English learners is a requirement from the federal government, and Virginia's proposal is that Access 2.0 test that I just referred to earlier. As well as, ESSA is going to require a school quality or student success criteria. Virginia is proposing to use chronic absenteeism. Mr. Wolf will be before you this evening to talk to you a little bit about chronic absenteeism and Virginia's response to ESSA. So where are we for this year? This year is the implementation year. So as you know, we are accredited this year based on last year's results. So Virginia has given us the flexibility to use either measure, whichever one is to our benefit, if ESSA accepts Virginia's proposal. If they accept our proposal, this year we have the flexibility. Fall of next year, we would not have the flexibility. We would be required to go with Virginia's proposed plan to ESSA.
So while I've still got you, one of the things that, again, all of this is our requirements, that we must make sure that as a school division, we are meeting them, even though, as you can tell over the last few years, there continue to be changes. Sometimes there's an evolution. I do believe that our state is ultimately going in a positive direction as far as looking at multiple indicators that help not only our schools but our public to realize what a quality education looks like. I still am concerned, and the attendance piece is one that will come up as an action item for policy later, I'm still concerned about under-resourced expectations. But one thing that we do have control over are our processes. In our case, process becomes everything because we must make sure that we put into effect structures and processes that are going to lead to improvement regardless of what our circumstances are. And I want to credit Ms. Flannard and her instructional team. We have, each of our schools has a school improvement plan that aligns with our division strategic plan. But this year, there is a bridge to make sure that, as you, and I'll back up, if you look at all the results that we were sharing with you, we were sharing with you highlights of individual school accomplishments. And over the last few years, I would say that every single one of our schools has seen some type of an improvement that we could boast of. But the goal as a school division is to have systemic, predictable improvement and sustainable improvement. For a school to go up 5% one year and down 6% the next year is not what we want, not only as a school but as a school division. So we want to focus even more on making sure that we equip and support our schools to sustain that progress and as one large ship continue to move forward without anyone going up or down or fluctuating. So the professional learning, as you all know about our professional learning communities and making sure that that culture of collaboration is alive and well in each of our schools, I know that this team behind me is working very hard with our principals to make sure that there is clarity in terms of making sure that we all move as one. A big part of that is not only going to be the job-embedded daily professional learning that's going to be built into the instructional calendar, but also the, really, the hand-over-hand instructional coaching that I think we're becoming known for. And we have such talented people, we wish we had more of them, that could come in and work alongside our teachers and administrators each and every day. But the ones that we do have are extremely talented and extremely strong, and that's going to continue to be, I think, a hallmark and a support for us moving forward. Building leadership capacity is something else that we have to continue to do. We have to get better, not just get more. And so making sure that the leaders that we have growing internally, our capacity through the programs like LEAD, the APIC Academy, and then using our teaching and learning time with principals to make sure that they get the professional development they need amidst their busy schedules. So finally, we always come back to what is our vision for the future. So often, we get caught up in the busyness. And I bring you back to our vision that we put into effect in 2013, especially those last three bullets in terms of ensuring and engaging, a supportive learning environment, building lasting partnerships with the community, and then that middle one, providing a broad spectrum of innovative opportunities, learning opportunities, learning experiences that mean something for students, not only now but for their future. And so the next slide is one that we show, again, it's conceptual, it's not set in stone, but it represents the vision that we are building to have many of our, basically, there would no longer be a traditional school, but every school would be based on what do our students need. Every one of them would be based on what do our students want to do with their futures and with their lives. And so you can see, again, this idea that each of our high schools in the future will have academies, specialty centers, programs where students can choose to concentrate, just as they would if they were to go to college and choose a major. We aren't there yet, but that is a big piece that we are building right now into the future as a part of our vision. So there can't be any questions, but we'll answer any if you have them.
Mr. Brazel, would you like to lead us off?
Thank you, Madam Chair, and Dr. Baker. Ms. Flannard, thank you for your presentation. I was not in the least bit bored by the slides. They're snappy, to say the least, and I appreciate the briefing. And I will say to you, and I'll say to all those that are assembled here under the sound of my voice and those that are watching on television, that it is in fact true, that's the way we do it. And the reason why I know that is because I had an opportunity this past couple weeks to stop by Riverview Elementary. And I had a great pleasure of receiving a detailed tour by your esteemed principal, Ms. Cunningham. And people that know me know that I ask a lot of questions, and the questions that I asked, it was evident that that's the way we do it. And so I just make this comment, I don't really have a question, I just make this comment, to share with everyone that it does take decisive leadership, and it takes leaders that are willing to engage in these concepts to make significant changes in the performance of our schools. And that is just evident, not only which was highlighted by Riverview, but also at Spotsylvania High School. And so I'm really excited about what we see here. The community should have confidence that this scheme of action for improving schools is the right direction in which way we need to go. And the great multiplier are instructional leaders, the principals, that demand excellence. And when that happens, you're going to see significant changes. So the numbers, the assessments do not surprise me. We made some changes a while back, which were good for everybody. And the evidence is now here as proof that this is the way we do it. So thank you for your briefing. And I'm sorry I didn't have a question, but I just needed to make a comment.
Mr. Blain.
Where do you start with questions, right? I'm so pleased to see so many of the things that you've talked about, personalized learning attempts, the professional learning, for example. I think that's really terrific. And the question is, as I look at, you talked about under personal learning, pursuit of equity, small groups and learning stations and technology, and I'm asking, what, to have small groups means you have to have somebody supervising each of the small groups, which tells me there must be a need for paraeducators and that type of thing, as well as, when we're talking about the need for coaching, you need somebody who's capable of coaching, and they've got to have time to go and watch people work in order to coach them to improve. And so how do you resolve those kind of issues? What are our needs for you to take a next step forward? This is a very impressive presentation and a whole lot to assimilate at one time, too, for me, anyway.
Well, I think that every year, we try to, I try to bring to light what the needs are through the budget presentation. The budget presentation, the budget proposal should be driven by what we're trying to accomplish in our schools and in our classrooms. And when you say, how do we bring to life these concepts such as station teaching and personalized learning, it takes all of those things. It takes not only the tools and the resources, but it does take the people. And so I know we have several elementary educators in here tonight, and I can tell you that they do it magically because they do not have enough paraeducator support. They do have to have two sets of eyes, one in the front and one in the back often. They do have to be extremely organized and adept at managing multiple activities at one time in terms of providing small group instruction and monitoring. They almost have to put an extra dose of planning into every single lesson to make sure that that all happens. We do have, as I said, a number of different coaching roles that provide the support, but not near enough to provide one even per school or one per classroom the way that we need to. So if you were to go and meet a person who provides coaching... We do have, as I said, a number of different coaching roles that provide the support, but not near enough to provide one even per school or one per classroom the way that we need to. So if you were to go and meet a person who provides coaching either in literacy or mathematics or in the area of instructional technology or just generally, you would find that that one individual is spread between multiple schools, and that means, you know, in many cases, hundreds of classrooms. So that is where we are. So the, not a real, not a real great answer to that, is we do the best that we can in terms of trying to make sure that the supports we have are focused and that they are really about the work that we were describing earlier through the teaching and learning framework.
The very fact that we have, you've put together such a terrific plan, though, and you're showing what improvement we are having, I think that reflects very positively about the people who are doing it and the organization of it, and I hope that that can continue. And all, and I, one of the comments that you made, I just can't not talk about it. You talked about kindergarten children and some kids coming to school ready to read. And I've heard so many school principals say to me, you'd be surprised, half the kids, I think, that have come to be registered for kindergarten, they don't not only know the alphabet, they haven't had a book in their hands since they've been born. And for our listening audience, this is something parents can do. And you have, we have to work here with the raw material that parents provide, and that's an area that we really need to do more. And I know that we're working in our Head Start and our Virginia Preschool Initiative, and we could sure, I'd like to see that expanded to be universal, to tell you the truth, if I had my way to do things.
Mr. Blain, just to, again, I would thank the board. Another way that you can continue to support these efforts, and you already have, is that allow this superintendent and future superintendents to continue to surround themselves with the kind of talent that I am able to surround myself with, both at the executive levels and throughout our schools. And then help to set conditions that make people want to be a part of what we're doing. And one thing that I think is drawing more and more people to us, at least I like to believe that this is what's drawing them to us, is that we have really centered ourselves on developing relationships with students. And so one of the ways that they're able to do that is building relationships with students so that students feel like they are where they're supposed to be and they're with who they're supposed to be. And that's one of the ways, it's not the quantity of people we have, but it's the quality of those people and the way that they distinguish themselves through the relationships that they develop, not only with students but with the families and with the community. And I think that's going to still have to be a big focus for us, belong beyond the pedagogy, beyond the technology. I really think here in public education, that's going to continue to be one way in which we distinguish ourselves.
And basic to our society, just what you said, public education. And my compliments to your staff and you folks for assembling such a high-quality group of people. I'm impressed.
Dr. Meyer.
Thank you, Madam Chair, Dr. Baker, Mrs. Flannard, thanks for a very good presentation. I was kind of expecting what you were going to present, and I was really hopeful that we were seeing it, and I think we have seen it. It's interesting, you know, one of the things I noted, that we're always looking at doing pilots, like the one you had spoke about with Courthouse Road, and I think that is definitely where we need to be adding. It's always a question, though, how can we add without taking away from something else that we're supposed to be doing and having the resources to do it? So, you know, later on, need to come back to us with a follow-up as to lessons learned and how can we expand this, getting back to Mr. Blain's point, then how do we fund it in order to be able to continue to do it? Because I'm expecting there's going to be a lot of interest in that. And also noting the many accomplishments, and you highlighted many of the schools that have made significant, very significant accomplishments, you cited Riverview. We also know that the other schools out there have made, may not have been on the list, but have likewise have made improvements. And as we note that they're making improvements, there are always areas where we will continue to have to look at to improve, those are the challenges. Just like you mentioned several of the schools that have had to face a challenge of coming up with a designation that nobody likes, but we had to admit that it was there and had to be addressed and have to carry that label for another year when it really is not merited. And I think it's going to be a challenge for this board as we try to carry our schools to the next level and all the schools making, so they can see where everyone is improving. Just because they got a label, you know, or they weren't necessarily mentioned tonight, but they have made, you know, significant improvements because of the staffing. So it is congratulations to Dr. Baker and your staff. I hope we're not looking at future superintendent, another, I hope you're not referencing anything there. Don't want to read between the lines.
No, just long-term vision.
Correct. Long-term. But kudos truly to Dr. Baker, Mrs. Flannard, and all the instructional staff and the principals because of what you have highlighted this evening, the growth that has been accomplished, and that is translated into the growth that the students are showing, that, you know, that continues. And it's not a one-year event, it has to be a continuous. The bar keeps getting higher, it never is the same. It has to continue. So with that, kudos.
Ms. Shelley.
You said, "Performance is not just looking at SOL scores." I love that because we can't just look at that, and I appreciated that so much. And I know the people out there and the people watching appreciate that as well, because it's not one test score that defines a student or defines a school or defines a teacher or defines anything. So I thank you so much for saying that. But I also, I want to celebrate all of our staff because of this wonderful accomplishment that our students have made. All of our staff needs to be celebrated, from the morning, from the stepping, getting onto the school bus, for the people feeding them in the breakfast line, teachers, pairs, people cleaning the room, our maintenance staff, everybody has something to do with this because they're making it, making a welcoming schools for our students. So I want to thank everybody for that. I also, going back to the accountability piece, the reporting categories, so are those going to be changing with ESSA?
Yes, they will still have reporting categories. We will no longer be having gap groups. So the reporting categories such as the delineation between ECD, SWD, Black, Hispanic, those reporting categories will remain. However, the theory is that we will not have two series of accountability going on at the same time. In other words, one set of benchmarks for the federal government and one set for Virginia. They're looking to merge them to have one.
Okay, because I wasn't, I wasn't sure if I understood that correctly. And then what is the state taking, are they taking into consideration for next year with, isn't there a new social studies test, aren't there no social studies tests starting? Yes. Does the state take that into account? When now, I didn't think so. So, okay, just so everybody watching, I know everybody in here knows that there will be a new SOL for social studies.
New SOLs are in effect. So just to clarify, to make sure that our teachers are teaching new SOLs. The committee has not said when the test items are going to actually be effective, meaning like they're going to take effect, not that they're effective in of itself.
Okay, good. And I'm going to make a clarification, too, that when the teachers are teaching the new SOLs, that the people out there know that what they're teaching are called the SOLs, Standards of Learning, and that's what the test is called, because I know some people didn't know that. And I want to say also one more thing. That WEADA Access Test, that is so impressive that our teachers, our ELL teachers, our Gen Ed teachers, our Special Ed teachers, everyone that's working with our L students, congratulations, that's huge. Thank you.
Thank you, guys. Mrs. Colbert and Ms. Gregory, 13.03 recruitment and retention updates.
Madam Chair, to the members of the board, again, good evening. We would like to begin by extending our gratitude to the school board for your focus on teaching and learning, which has allowed our department to fully staff our schools prior to the opening day. That's a huge accomplishment for our schools and for our leaders that are behind us and who are not here with us. So if we could, just please give them a round of applause for their work. Again, we do appreciate their diligence and their commitment, again, at the divisional level from the school level in terms of recommending quality teachers as well as support staff. And on this evening, we'll go through a few highlights in regards to the strategic plan, teacher and staff highlights, recruiting efforts, retention efforts, as well as any questions and comments that you all may have for us. Our work as an HR department is aligned to the mission and the vision of the school division. The greatest resource that we can make available to our students is to ensure that we have effective teaching and a learning occurring through our people. Our superintendent referenced earlier in the presentation, the quality of our staff is second to none, and that's how you are able to celebrate along with them the accomplishments of the students. As a department, it is our mission to engage and educate and equip those employees so that they can adequately prepare the students for their future. When we look at the strategic plan and goals, our department is aligned to the teaching and learning goal within the strategic plan. And on this evening, we'll spend some time updating the board on strategies from our department that are used to employ, that we've employed in order to recruit and to retain quality staff. Oh, I'm sorry. Okay. I didn't realize I was on TV. In terms of teacher and staff highlights, some things we want to be able to bring to your attention, and this data is reflective of when we closed out the previous school year, that 55% of our teachers hold advanced degrees. Forty-six of our teachers are nationally board certified. The average years of service with our teachers are 13 years. And then we do want to recognize that over 71% of our staff are actually employees in our county. Just to highlight a few things in regards to the research and what it states, and specifically as it relates to the teacher shortage. Currently, the Commonwealth of Virginia and across the nation, school divisions are facing a teacher shortage. We like to joke in our office and say, this struggle is real. I mean, you have heard the conversations and we've read about it, but in the last couple of years, as a division, we've actually really realized how challenging it is to staff the schools. According to a report from the U.S. Department of Education, since 2009, the national enrollment in teacher preparatory programs has dropped by 30%, while the post-secondary enrollment overall has dropped to just 3%. So when you think about those numbers in terms of students enrolling in teacher prep programs, that continues to create a challenge for us in staffing our schools. Also, a recently published article reported that there are 800 unfilled teaching positions across the state on last year, and it was predicted that we could potentially have as many as 1,300 in the Commonwealth this year. You will see for 2017 and 18, the VDOE has critical shortage areas that they report out to us each year, and they define critical shortage as, in two different ways, as shortages by subject matter or by personnel vacancies in which school divisions receive three or fewer candidates to apply. When you look at the list there, it is not listed in any particular order in terms of an area that's more critical than others, but we, as a division, have seen greater challenges with positions like elementary education that historically we have not. So again, as we continue to do this work and look at what is required to staff our schools, we are starting, we have really started to see some of these critical shortage areas approach us in our division. When you look at special education, it does break down into very specific areas in regards to speech and language pathologists, general ed curriculum, special ed teachers, as well as teachers of more low incidence programs, as well as hearing impaired and visual impaired beings, and very specific areas under special education. At this time, I'll turn it over to Dr. Gregory to give you some highlights in regards to our actual recruitment data and where we are.
All right. Good afternoon, Madam Chair, school board members, Dr. Baker and Dr. Martin. So as we look at the vacancies, this slide will provide an overview of the vacancies we've had for 2017, 2018. We had a total of 246 vacancies, and these are for licensed positions, and those positions include administrators, teachers, specialists, coordinators, coaches, and therapists. There were a total of 20 administrative vacancies this school year and 45 special education teacher vacancies. We were fortunate to open school with just one long-term substitute to fill, and that's a vacant math position. However, that substitute will be eligible for provisional license at the end of October. And at that time, we will be able to extend a contract to that particular substitute. We have an instructional technology resource teacher position that will be filled after October 13th, and in the interim, resources have been reallocated to provide support to the schools with the vacant position and the vacant reading specialist position at elementary level. In the absence of the three SOPs that we're continuing to search for and one OT, those services are being provided by, through our contracted agencies and the supervisor of HR, we are utilizing the services of retired administrators until a suitable candidate is found for the vacancy. With our recruiting efforts, we continue to extend our efforts by partnering with the higher education cohorts in our community, outside of our community, in far-reaching states, student teachers, and practicum application processes. We are interviewing our student teachers earlier to try to get first grabs and first dibs at those students in our division. We're looking at traditional and non-traditional licensure routes and candidate pools, our paraprofessionals, our career switchers, recruiting teams consisting of diverse body of employees so that we can try to mirror our staff population as we do our student population, recruiting teams at historically Black colleges with education programs. We're conducting panel interviews as well as having a regional job fair, and there's a transportation fair, and we're doing also marketing tools and using our teacher website. We've even extended our recruiting efforts by joining the listserv of the Virginia Department of Education. We are looking to move our recruiting efforts further south into North Carolina and Florida and as well as in the northern area of Michigan. And we're also considering virtual career fairs as a method of recruiting to further extend our geographical reach. For hard-to-staff areas such as math teachers, we've even reached out to the National Council of the Teacher of Mathematics for help with recruiting, as well as continue to build relationships with colleges and universities. And this is a list of the recruiting trips that we were fortunate enough to attend on last year, even though we had a very lean budget, we have managed to streamline our recruiting trips so that we focus in the areas where we have seen a great return on With the recruiting initiatives, one of the things that we've done... With the recruiting initiatives, one of the things that we've done is have information sessions where we reached out to candidates who, anybody in our school district that already had a four-year degree and were interested in being a teacher. When we had that individual, when we had those information sessions, we had 39 people to show up and 20 plus 25 extra people who couldn't make it but reached out for additional information. And at the information session, we shared with those that were present, different scholarships that were available to help defray the cost of their education. And if they had to resort to utilizing student loans, how those student loans can be repaid through their service and other different methods. We also implemented a teacher and staff referral program where we utilized our teachers as word of mouth to try to recruit staff members and to let us know about friends and family members and other people that they were interested in working with our division. And this program was sponsored by Panera Bread. So as a result of our recruiting initiatives, our teacher and staff referral campaign, we had 41 teachers to make referrals, and out of those referrals, 11 people were hired. From our teacher information session, we hired our own 17 par educators and eight substitutes. And student teachers, we had 21 student teachers, and we were fortunate enough to secure seven of those. As we look at the licensed staff and the demographic data, we have seen improvements in every area of ethnicity and race with exception of American Indian and Hawaiian Pacific. We're going to continue to try to diversify our recruiting efforts and continue to keep our boots on the ground while we're trying both non-conventional and conventional methods of recruiting. As we look at the data for this school year, we had 246 vacancies. And this slide focuses strictly on the certificated staff that was hired for this year, whereas the previous slide was focusing on the total number of staff for 2016, 2017, and 2017, 2018. We are continuously striving to diversify our workforce, as I stated earlier, to mirror the diversity that we are welcoming and valuing in our student population. We are working to increase our methods of recruiting minorities. And we have even reached out to the Asian Chamber of Commerce, the Hispanic Chamber of Commerce, the Central Virginia African-American Chamber of Commerce, as well as we've been attending job fairs on the military institutions.
So Dr. Gregory has highlighted our recruiting efforts, and we know that we put the work in to recruit the staff, but we also are charged with ensuring that we are putting some measures into place to retain our staff. You will see on this slide that we have tried to capture as much data as we can through exit interview process of the staff that have exited the school division. As each employee leaves, we do provide them with an exit survey. And out of the 200-plus licensed folks that exited, we had over 190 responses. When you look at the data, one of the things that I do want to call your attention to is that 24% of our folks that leave are retirees. When you look at the chart, and I'm going to call your attention to specific components of it because the colors are sometimes a little difficult to differentiate, with 17% of our staff that were licensed staff to relocate to other areas from the data that we were able to gather. We had 16% to accept positions in other divisions within Virginia. And then the other components that I want to highlight is 7% of our staff had personal and family matters. And then we had 23% that didn't really give any specificity outside of that they were resigning. So those are some areas that we want to continue to collaboratively gain more information and feedback because that feedback will assist us in moving forward to identify what needs that they have that we can better support as a school division to ensure that we're able to retain the teachers after we put the effort into recruiting them. We want to highlight a few of our programs or retention efforts. We continue to maintain our mentoring program for our new teachers that are hired into our school division. Some very key components with the mentoring program is to really focus on retention efforts and to really ease the transition into our division. That program is planned collaboratively with our instruction department, and they meet regularly with mentors and mentees to ensure that we're addressing relevant and pertinent topics that they will need to be prepared for as they matriculate through the school year. Earlier, we referenced the LEAD program. We just completed Cohort Two of LEAD as well as Year One of LEAD Two mentorship. Dr. Gregory referenced that we had 20 administrative positions that were vacant. Of the 20 administrative positions, all but one of the candidates that was recommended and that you all voted on were internal candidates. So that really is a testament to the leadership building and capacity and the growth that's happening in the division with our teachers, as well as our assistant principals and administrative team. Out of this one, well, we have 19 that are filled. We still have the one administrative vacancy in our department. But out of those, 12 were LEAD completers. So you have over 60% of your newly hired principals, assistant principals, instructional coordinators, supervisors who completed LEAD. And some were LEAD Two participants as well. The other piece that we launched this year in collaboration with Office of Student Support Services, they've really taken this and have moved forward. As we looked at the turnover in special education teachers, we found that professional learning needs were critical in terms of instructionally and in terms of compliance and ensuring that those needs are met. And so we got that feedback from the teachers, from administrators, and just from our day-to-day working with them. So Ms. Richardson's office, they launched the program beginning on August 21st. They had three very intense days of professional learning with new special education teachers, but they were a vibrant, excited group and really looking forward to the school year. And they will continue to meet monthly in conjunction with the mentor-mentee program. As far as future staffing initiatives, one thing that we do want to highlight that the successes that we celebrate on this evening are based on three tenants, one being just the cohort efforts, just consistent communication and collaboration across departments and schools. And then the partnerships of even engaging our universities and our community business partners. So like we've started with the instructional highlights of this takes the village, it takes us all to make this happen. Likewise, with the staffing efforts, it requires all of our work together to do so. We do plan to initiate a student-teacher university. And one of the things that we've seen is that we have actually more student teachers that have, are coming to us this fall, and so they have a chance to student teach with us. And then they have an opportunity to student teach potentially in one of our neighboring divisions. And our goal is to help them realize that there's no better place to be than Spotsylvania County Public Schools. And so we will be working and engaging those student teachers in the student-teacher university so that when they graduate, they know where they're coming. And lastly, we know that the more efforts we can put into growing our own, then the better served we'll be. So by way of long-range plans, we do want to initiate a teacher cadet program where our very own students that are currently in our secondary schools, that we can spark an interest and a love and a passion for teaching and learning in them so that four years down the road, they're coming back home to serve the school division that served them. So at this time, if you have questions for us, we'll be happy to answer them.
Ms. Palmer?
Thank you so much for all that information. I'm focusing on the slide, thank you, on the slide with your exit survey results. This is something that's particularly interesting to me. So the exit survey, is it a multiple-question survey? Are there things that you're asking other than why did you go?
There are multiple questions, several questions, actually. And to your point, if I may, one of the things that we are looking at is that the VDOE has provided us a questionnaire, that's a model questionnaire, and we will be revising ours to better align with that. And so that's as user-friendly as possible.
Is that an anonymous survey, or is there name associated with it?
Currently, they do put their names on it.
Okay. And can you tell me again, you had 190 responses out of how many?
We had, when we look at the survey data, it's inclusive of support and licensed staff. For the purpose of this presentation, we based it on comparison to the 246 hiring class that we referenced.
Okay. And the last question was, so to my mind, people could answer more than one category. Were they able to do that, or is it choose the one?
They chose one. The data's based on one category.
So the people who accepted a position in different school division may not have said that it was because of better salary and benefits. They may have just chosen, "I'm going somewhere else."
That's correct.
Okay. Thank you.
Mr. Braswell?
Thank you, Madam Chair, and Ms. Colbert and Dr. Gregory. Thank you for your detailed presentation. I was keenly paying attention to the data that pertained to minority hiring. And I was very excited and delighted that your efforts externally are focused on increasing minority enrollment. And I just say that for the fact that it's extremely important, not only for children that are of minorities to see minority teachers, but is equally as important for students that were, or majority students, to see minority teachers teaching in the classroom and being in the building. So part of what I've seen is there's a lot of external efforts that you all have initiated in order to increase or ensure that we have minority hiring going on. But the other side of the equation that's not there, and you can address it, is that we have to have an internal evaluation of where we stand in our own individual buildings and what our intentions are to make a definitive change in the way it looks. The reason being, the reason I say that is, is that a lot of times, and no one is accusing anyone of anything, no one's asking for any forms of affirmative action or any other forms of quotas. But people tend to hire who they feel comfortable with. People tend to hire in a way that they're comfortable with a certain way a person is in terms of culture or background, and so they tend to hire that way. And so what I say to us internally is that we need to make sure that we're taking our blinders off, that we're giving diversity an opportunity to flourish when it's in the best interest of the school division or the best interest of your building. Because there's a lot of hiring that goes on that's decentralized hiring. And so we're counting on building administrators to do a lot of that heavy lifting so that we can have a school division that is diverse in such a way that it reflects our school division. So I applaud you all for the work that you're doing externally. And I would encourage those of us that are in the, at the building level to be more cognizant of the fact that you are the ones that are going to make the cutting-edge difference in hiring at that level. So I bring that as a comment, and if you want to elaborate on that, please do. But I thank you for your emphasis on minority hiring. And then the other thing that we need to do as a board, because they mentioned one of the unique tools that we have available to us is substitute teachers. When you get a chance to have someone work with you, whether it's a substitute that comes in periodically that you can count on or a long-term substitute that fills in and does an exemplary job where you've had the opportunity to evaluate them, when they're starting to look for a position, oh, you're going to go there first because you know them. And I would argue that if we on the board, in our up-and-coming budgets and future budget years, make sure that our substitute pay is competitive with our contemporaries, it will make Dr. Gregory and Ms. Colbert's job a lot easier because we are in a situation where we are in keen competition for the shrinking resources that are available. And we need to be on the cutting edge of it, so we need to only be smart about recruiting externally, but also internally, and make sure that we maximize the opportunities that we have. So I said a lot, and there was a lot of comment or commentary there, but if you have anything that you'd like to clean up in what I said, please share.
All right. So as you're talking about developing internally, a lot of the paraprofessional that we did hire, they were minorities that we reached out to, as well as the substitutes. And we are looking forward to, as we expand forward to, moving forward to trying to develop our paraprofessionals with some kind of support academy where we're working to help them with interview practices and being more professionally developed. Another thing we're doing is we have panel interviews, where we'll have four or five principals on the panel. And with the panel interviews, we are interviewing people from different races, from external, internal, female, male. And so with having those different panel interviews, and those are being fostered by the Office of Human Resources. So we reach out to the candidates and screen them first, and then we set up the interviews and invite the principals in. And that has been pretty successful.
Thank you.
Ms. Shelley?
Thank you. I wanted to reiterate what Ms. Palmer said about the 16%, because I wrote that down as well. Because I don't want people to think that, oh, well, only a small percentage of student, of teachers are leaving because of pay. We don't know that for sure because they accepted a position in another school division. They might not have wanted to say it was because of pay. So I wanted to reiterate that. And I wanted to also say that I'm very excited that our recruiting is going to expand to some other places, especially this one. Because I know of, I can only speak of Florida. I do know that there are some wonderful education programs because I went to one. So I'm thrilled that we're going to be expanding our recruiting efforts down there. But thank you again for such a wonderful presentation. I really appreciate that.
Mr. Blain?
I just want to be sure that we haven't missed one of your outstanding accomplishments. When you look over the numbers of divisions in the state and the number of positions that they have that were not filled, and you look at Spotsylvania, and you said, "For practical purposes, we have 100% accomplished." And that speaks so highly of what you folks have done, but it also talks about the reputation that this division is getting that was elaborated on in the first part of this presentation. And people are looking at us as the first place to at least look. And as long as we have salaries that are attractive and you do the kind of work that you're doing, we're going to have many opportunities for hiring. So I'm sure I'm complimenting on everybody's behalf for your outstanding performance. Thank you.
Dr. Meyer? Mr. Twig?
Thanks for your accomplishments in that area and doing slightly better than last year, you know, as far as filling those slots. One question, why are we hiring one of four from internal recommendation vice, I don't know, say, three of four, or three and a half of four?
Are you referencing administrators?
You gave a reference point of we're hiring one of four people that are recommended from somebody on the inside. I don't know what that means, what the context is.
I think it's in reference to the PowerPoint slide where you were discussing the program, the referral program. That was when they said that. So they were just saying that we're getting one of four of our hirees from the referral program?
How about that? How are we doing then on internal recommendations?
From our perspective, I think we're doing a wonderful job on internal recommendations. As Dr. Gregory highlighted, 25 of those teachers
As Dr. Gregory highlighted, 25 of those teachers that were from the Grow Your Own program are literally from our, from our division that we reached out to and provided those resources. In regards to our administrative hires, out of the 19 that we've secured, 18 of them are all internal candidates.
Okay, and then how many were recommended then? 20, 30?
For the teacher referral program?
Yes, ma'am.
So for the teacher referral program, we had 41 people to refer, and we reached out to those people to complete applications and to come in for interviews. And so out of those people, only 11 were interested in employment, and we secured those 11.
Okay, that's based on the interest factor is where, that's what answers my question.
Yes, that's exactly right. So we're fortunate to get those 11 from those teachers.
There you go. So, thank you very much. That's important.
Any other questions from board members? Dr. Baker has something for us.
I just wanted to point out to the board again, the two presentations that you've seen this evening were intended to be, to some extent, complimentary in that I'm very proud of how our instruction and human resources teams work seamlessly to try to support, again, the outcomes. And one thing that I, I know you don't have a range of data in front of you, they just showed you really this past year. But a couple of years ago, we began to look at the trend over time. And I'll just point out one area, which was minority hiring, and I'll use African-American, black staff. And they pointed out licensed. What you saw in terms of just under 5% for licensed staff has been a almost constant percentage over more than a decade. And for these two individuals who represent a very tiny department that helps us to support over 3,000 employees, to have been able in one recruitment season to rise that, raise that percentage by multiple percentage points is phenomenal. And I'm going to say it. And I want to also credit our principals, and I really appreciate Mr. Braswell's focus. He's right. We have to continue to dig and focus on our staff being the best for our students. And that means we have to look building by building as well as division-wide. But to take that kind of step with a shrinking pool within a shrinking pool within a shrinking pool, I just want to credit these ladies and our entire staff, because that just does not happen, especially in a school division as large as ours.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, ladies. Anyone move on to, oh, Mr. Braswell?
Just one short comment, Madam Chair. Dr. Baker, again, because you mentioned integration, this is why we do it.
Thank you.
We'll move on to item 14.01, First Reading Approval of Provisions to School Board Policy JED, Student Attendance and JED-R, Student Attendance Regulations at Spotsylvania County Schools. Mr. Wolf.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Good evening. Good evening, members of the board, Dr. Baker and Dr. Martin. Due to changes in the provisions regarding attendance tracking and reporting as required by Virginia law, policy JED and regulation JEDR are being presented this evening for review by the board. So my hope tonight is to go through, well, another slide presentation, so I'm sorry about the instruction you're receiving this evening. So, but our hope is to go ahead and talk a little bit about some information from the state in regards to attendance regulations. So some discussion points that I would like to mention are deal with compulsory attendance, improving school attendance, chronic absenteeism is what you heard a little bit about tonight, every student, every day, the Virginia Department of Education goals, as well as recommendations to policy JED, JED and JEDR, the definition of what an excused absence happens to be, and then interventions, next steps, and then any questions the board may have at the end. So to begin, our Virginia Code 221254 represents in our Spotsylvania County Public School Policy JEA. And basically, this states that every parent, guardian, or other person having control or charge of any child who has reached the fifth birthday or before September 30th of any school year and who has not passed their 18th birthday shall send such child to public school or otherwise provide the child with an education in accordance with state law, unless the child is exempt from the state's compulsory attendance requirement. There are exceptions to this policy as granted by the law. For example, it could be alternative education programs, Individual Student Alternative Education Plan, or known as ISAEP, or court-ordered placements. The goal is to improve student attendance, and improving school attendance and reducing dropout rates are part of a larger effort to increase achievement of all students and close performance gaps between student subgroups. Starting in pre-K, student attendance equals exposure to language-rich environments. This is especially important for children from low-income families. Students need to be in the classroom to benefit from what's being taught here. Too many chronic absences leave students struggling to read well by the end of third grade, failing classes in middle and high school, and potentially dropping out from high school. Attendance in high school even predicts college enrollment and persistence. As mentioned on the previous slide, chronic absenteeism is a proven early warning sign that a student is behind. Most often, you can review a failing student's report card and see that a direct correlation to the number of absences the student has accumulated. Chronic absenteeism, though, is a relatively new term that is based upon what research shows about the impact of lost instructional time. It is defined as missing 10% or more school days and shows when a student has missed so much school that he or she is academically at risk. Chronic absences are a measure of lost instructional time for any reason. For Spotsylvania County Public Schools, this 10% equates to 18 or more days per academic year. It includes excused and unexcused absences as well as suspensions. A renewed focus on the importance of student attendance has been established by Virginia. Virginia Accountability Proposal, Virginia's Accountability Proposal as part of ESSA that you heard a little bit about tonight, will use chronic absenteeism as a school quality and student success indicator for all grade spans. The Virginia Board of Education received stakeholder feedback regarding this indicator and other indicators before making its selection, and significant consideration was given before this indicator was selected. Additionally, this focus also stems from a greater effort to promote every student, every day, a national initiative to address and eliminate chronic absenteeism. This initiative is rooted in tracking the number of students who are chronically absent not only across our division but across the Commonwealth and nation. The regulations will hopefully produce more consistent data across districts and identify effective practices meant to assist school divisions' continuous improvement of daily school attendance. Based on research, 10% of chronic absenteeism was established in Virginia as a long-term goal for all students, for all subgroups. As with the academic indicators, this indicator will also be measured annually. In response to every student, every day, and ESSA, the Virginia Department of Education has developed specific goals, specifically to provide for consistent and accurate data collection and reporting, improve attendance-related policies, procedures, and evidence-based prevention and intervention practices, and enhance school staff capability to early identify students with non-attendance issues and to intervene and provide support and to case-manage and monitor progress. Additionally, to create a positive impact on the family, the student, school division, and court services in their efforts to improve school attendance and to increase a student's opportunity to benefit from a quality education in preparation for career and post-secondary education. Finally, additional goals is to create a climate for improving communication, cooperation, and coordination of services among community partner agencies and public systems to address issues manifested in truancy behavior, and encourage dissemination of information to increase public knowledge of the importance of regular school attendance and these regulations. So, as a result of these efforts to track and reduce chronic absenteeism, I am recommending specific changes this evening to our current attendance policy JED and regulation JEDR so that we may be in line with the new law. The new provisions of this law, which is Virginia Code 20-730-20, Unexcused Absences Intervention Process and Responsibilities, specifically outline the steps that are to take place when a student has absences that are considered unexcused. Specific actions are to be taken at the fifth, sixth, and seventh unexcused absence and will be reported as required by the new state regulations and guidelines. However, prior to describing the specific consequences outlined by the law, I feel it is important to inform the board and the community of the state's definition of unexcused absence. So an unexcused absence means an absence where the student misses his or her instructional school day in its entirety, and no indication, and I repeat, no indication has been received by school personnel within three days of the absence that the student's parent is aware and supports the absence. Or the parent provides a reason for the absence that is unacceptable to the school administration, which could be due to excessiveness. When the fifth unexcused absence occurs, the intervention that is to occur is that the parent is to be notified by phone or email to obtain an explanation. The parent shall be contacted in a face-to-face conference by telephone or through the use of other communication devices, and reasons are then documented and consequences are explained to the parent. An attendance plan shall be made, and the student may be referred to a school-based multidisciplinary team. It should be noted here that it's not just on the fifth absence that our students receive notification. Every day that a student happens to be out, there is notification that is sent. According to the law, when a student has received six unexcused absences, the school is to schedule a face-to-face attendance conference or an interaction that is conducted through the use of communication technology. This meeting must occur, or this notification must occur within 10 school days. The attendance conference then must be held within 15 school days, that is inclusive of the 10. The conference shall include the parents, students, school personnel, and may include community partners. When a student has reached or received seven unexcused absences, the division superintendent or designee, and in this case, the school, shall contact the juvenile domestic relations court intake to file a complaint alleging that the child is in need of supervision or a CHINS petition or to institute proceedings against the parent. All records of intervention shall be presented to the intake worker. But it should be noted here that a court referral does not need to be filed should the interventions that are being, that have been put into place at step number five or the fifth unexcused absence, if we see that those interventions are working and a student has just not returned a note, you do not have to file with the courts. You just have to make that documentation, because that's going to be part of the reporting categories that take place later on. So our next steps is communication to our parents and community. Sending communication, a letter was sent home with our elementary students, and a message was sent via email through school messenger to our community. This communication was also delivered in Spanish. We are encouraging daily reminders from our schools about the importance of school attendance and asking parents or guardians to inform the school of the reason for the absence within three days of the student's return. And then collaboration with our schools and our community partners to offer support and early intervention. So, it is the administration's recommendation that the school board waive the customary second reading approval of policy JED and approve both JED and JEDR as presented.
Is there a motion?
I will move that we act affirmatively on this request. Second.
Motion by Mr. Blaine, a second by Dr. Meyer, to approve the first reading of the policy and waive the second reading. Any discussions? Mr. Blaine.
What all is involved when you get to the sixth and the seventh level, when we have to go and have a meeting, sometimes go down to court and so on? What kind of impact is that going to have, is my question, in terms of our personnel? If we have, if you're going to be in front of a judge, you've got to have one or two or three people there, plus the parents. Where do they come from, and are we equipped to handle that?
Sure, which is a great question. In meeting with members of not just the instructional team, but also members of court services to have this discussion, to include our social workers, this is a daunting task, to say the least, in regards to what is required. I completely can understand with the state's focus on chronic absenteeism and the focus, you know, not just on chronic absenteeism, but what leads up to that and the truancy, and the schools not receiving any indication as to why the student has missed school. So, but at the fifth, as was presented, Mr. Blaine, at the fifth unexcused absence, the school is looking to put in an intervention plan. So at the sixth, it could, the sixth could occur the very next day, or the sixth could occur two months afterwards. So at that point, I would really say that it's on a case-by-case basis that you're looking at the structures of the intervention plan. So, and although on the seventh unexcused absence, that there is a report for a CHINS petition, a child in need of services, is, that's a three-page document that you would go ahead and submit through your school social worker customarily, and, or the school administration go and work with court services. And then there's the process from there. So, but it is, it's, it is a partnership. It was a good meeting that we happened to have because the focus of that meeting really was partnership, so.
The goal is very good. I'm asking myself, what does it mean in terms of our budget? We're just starting the budget season almost, and I, it would be helpful if maybe we could make it, if we look back at last year and see had we, what we actually did, and if we had the same number of absentees this year or whatever, that, give us a sense. That's just kind of a request.
Sure, our review of the data that is suggestive of last year for chronic absenteeism is that the state, when Dr. Baker and Mrs. Leonard were up here earlier and they were talking about the, Virginia's proposal for its accountability system, is that there's going to be a ranking that's going to be associated with that. And essentially, there's a 0 to 15%, there's going to be three tiers within that. And I don't have the slide to present to you all this evening, but essentially, there are three tiers. A school that is considered tier one, not needing so much intervention, will have a chronic absenteeism rate of between 0 and 15%. A tier two would be anything from 16 to 24, and then tier three would be 25 and above. Our records indicate, based off of the chronic absenteeism rate from what we had last year, is 15.8. So of a total division-wide grade span. So 15.8 would put us right on the front side of that second tier, or right on the backside of tier one, so.
That's enough.
I just wanted to make a comment, just that this was mandated, so we can't do anything to change the policy or affect it, so.
That's, that's true, but in a sense, that's our challenge. How do we pay for things that were mandated to do?
Exactly, it's an example of unfunded mandate that burdens us every budget season. Correct.
And if we can present that information, I would hope it would help influence our budget.
I agree.
Dr. Meyer?
Since this is coming on such short notice, but yet we're required to have it, what steps are being taken, knowing this is something we're required to do because we're required to uphold the code? So it becomes, how do we manage it, and what steps are we doing or are we taking to manage this implementation of the code?
This task at this point?
Correct.
We are following up with, well, we followed up with our community first and foremost to make them aware, prior to the first day of school, to make sure that they had that information. And really, it's a matter of all hands on deck from, in the instruction department, to make sure that we have the technology available for reporting purposes, that we have our counseling involved, that we have our school social worker, our Office of Student Support. Really, when I say all hands on deck, that's really what it is, to make sure that our schools, and to Mr. Blaine's point, this does have a budget impact. You know, I don't know that we, probably with two or three social workers, that that would be, you know, extra, that would be enough. So there are some things that we need to take a look at, and really what it is, is that customarily, for chronic attendance issues, we have sent out letters at 10, 15, and 20 days to go ahead and make sure that the parents are aware that there's a chronic attendance issue or an absenteeism issue. But then again, as you remember, is that chronic absenteeism is both excused or unexcused absences. Essentially, what with our prior practice is that unexcused absences were essentially unverified. So at this point, the goal is for greater communication from our parent community to make sure that we have an indication or a sense as to why a student has missed school. So, and I don't know if that answers your question or not, but.
Is a follow-up? Uh, you did, because I did have the, I was trying to establish the comparison between what are we doing currently and now what's it going to require us to do? And it does get at what Mr. Blaine was, was saying, and I think what you're going to wind up doing as you all hands on deck, you, and in the three or four months as you're preparing for the budget, this upcoming budget request, you will actually establish the baseline of, okay, now in order to meet the code requirements, we're going to need this, that, and the other.
Right.
And it establishes, and these are, are going to have to be required, not requests or just a want. This is now a requirement.
Right, the impact through our communication with our schools and in working with them is to essentially, while the state's long-term goal is to hit ten percent of chronic absenteeism or lower, our, our rate sitting at fifteen point eight right now, we don't want to be tier two, we want to be at least tier one, you know, at, you know, at the very best, we want to be tier one, and we want to reduce that rate. We want to get down by that ten percent as well. So, but it's going to take some efforts in regards to making sure that our, our students are really engaged in the school environment, both socially, academically, emotionally, and that we are meeting needs. When, when Dr. Baker and Mr. Leonard were talking about small group interaction and personalized learning, this, this is all together, it really is interwoven, and creating those, those engaging lessons can go ahead and make sure that, you know, essentially ensure that a student will want to come to school, to go ahead and be a part of that. But there are outside factors that take place inside of the community that we need to make sure that we have the social workers to go ahead and support those students so when they do come into school, and we can go ahead and keep them there.
I think a follow-up, and I'm going to piggyback again on what Mr. Blaine was saying, that when we meet with our area legislators later this fall, that we then have the data so that we can say, you know, when you pass a mandate, and no one's objecting to the purpose, the purpose is highly, you know, we all understand the importance of it, but when you're now regimenting it to the extent that it's now on the fifth, sixth, and seventh versus ten, fifteen, and twenty, that it requires extra hands on deck, which means you need to put the money for the funding in order to create this objective, which is a state code. You're asking, we don't have a choice in the matter.
We don't.
State code, we can't vote against it because we're voting against the code of Virginia. But we do have to have a say in how do we manage it and, and to say, we have to go back to our legislators who approved this change, for good reason, but at the same time, put the money and the funding there so that it can be accomplished. And we're not going to be the only school division.
No.
There's another hundred and thirty that are going to be with us in the same boat.
I agree.
Mr. Braswell.
Thank you, Madam Chair, just briefly. I think a lot of, has already been mentioned about, you know, this is something that we have to do. However, I have a couple of questions that maybe we can clear up some ambiguity for staff. When a student reaches five or six unexcused absences, what recourse is, recourse does the administration have or the school division have to receive relief from a parent that does not want to cooperate with the proceedings?
There are reporting categories, Mr. Braswell, in regards to that as well. So, essentially, you're reporting to the state that the, the parent is refusing to meet, and that's a documentation as well. So, when you get to, say, the seventh, because the seventh is, is really where it hits the courts. So, your documentation at that point, from your fifth and sixth, when you hit the seventh, if it's a parent issue and not a student issue, that's when essentially you can lead for a proceedings against the parent at that point, not the child.
Okay. And, and the other question I had is, under unexcused absences, it says it means an absence where, and then you go down to the third definition of it, if you will, and it says the parent provides a reason for the absence that is unacceptable to the school administration. In that particular definition, which is vague, could mean something entirely different to twenty-three different school administrators.
Absolutely.
Which could lead to an unfair enforcement of this regulation. Is there some specific guidance that we're going to provide as to what are unacceptable standards for, you know, for absences, considering some of the examples that they provided below were all crossed out? For example, all-day truancy, missing a ride or a bus, disapproved pre-arranged absence, failure to produce an appropriate written explanation, extenuating circumstances not approved by the principal, all those were scratched out. So, there's no specificity as to how the building administrator is supposed to define that.
What's acceptable, what's unacceptable. We'll be working with the school administration in regards to that, but I would, I would, I guess I would counter with that if you have a, a child who has missed the bus once or twice, that, and misses school all day because of that, I think that's a case-by-case basis. If you're receiving a note that the child has missed the bus seven, eight, nine times, then that requires a different sort of approach as opposed to someone who's missed the bus once or twice. So, the list that's down at the bottom, while many of that deals with truancy, and essentially, an unexcused absence is truancy because truancy, as defined by the state, is there's no indication as to why the student missed school and the parent has not provided any of that. So, we didn't want to provide a list down at the bottom like, like we had previously because much of that is sort of similar language for each sort of bullet point. So, the only one that really stuck out was missing a ride on the bus. So, but if we're seeing that that's coming across many times, then we're going to ask our administrators to, how many times do you accept that? Well, you have to look at a case-by-case basis. If it's a student who has, defined by chronic absenteeism, who has missed anywhere between, you know, ten, fifteen, twenty days of school, you're going to treat that a little different as opposed to someone who, this is their third absence. You know, so there is a, a degree of levity. I understand the point, though, as, as was mentioned earlier, as one, and if anybody knows me, I'm all about it, as one. So, but we need to make sure that we're having conversations with our administrators, that there's a certain degree of, of common sense in regards to how you're going to work with individuals based off of their own personal circumstances. And just like we would personalized learning, in some situations, you're going to have to personalize this attendance order.
Discipline.
So, yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Yes.
Dr. Baker?
Just to, I know a few things have come up from the board that I wanted to address. One, it may be important to note some things that are going to change. One is that we are going to continue as a, as a school division in, in schools to try to enforce compulsory attendance at the state level because that law has always been, at least since I've been in education. So, we are always going to be trying, not only to make sure that students are in school, but providing, you know, enhanced communication to parents. All of those things are, are going to continue to be what we try to do better and better every day. One thing that Dr. Meyer mentioned that I wanted to point out, he mentioned legislative efforts. I need to double-check on what the status, but you all heard recently, as well as many of our staff, from the state superintendent, I know that he and the Board of Education have been engaged in proposed revisions to the standards of quality. And to use some of the language that he's used, the revisions to the standards of quality are very much about looking today at what schools need versus what is politically or fiscally feasible to, you know, put in terms of requirements, and an example would be staffing requirements. So, I think that not only are legislators in supporting that, because if standards of quality, which are already the current ones, are underfunded at the state level, they are not fully funded, the standards we have now, if those standards are then in certain areas such as school administrators, school counselors, school social workers, if those standards of quality that are proposed, the revisions are to increase the percentage or the numbers of those staff positions per the total student population, we're going to need to get legislators behind that because that's the direct funding to support that. And that is, as I mentioned earlier, is this is an under-resourced expectation in terms of the implementation at the very early steps. The other thing that we won't know, though there's a lot of proactive communication going on, on right now, is how are our other agencies prepared to manage that? So, a lot of that is going to be just moving step by step. I do appreciate the strain that, that this puts not only on our board, but in boards throughout the state. Just know that we're not going to stop working with our families, and I, and I think that Mr. Wolf said at the end, great way to close that, is that, that personalized approach is really what this is about. In the end, it is not about policing as much as it is about, we want students in school because that's the best place for them to be. And I appreciate your consideration of, of passing this again without a second reading so that all of that work can move forward. And if necessary, incrementally, we can come back. I know it's, it would be a joy for Mr. Wolf to come back and.
Sure.
Provide updates on the progress of implementing the new policy and law.
Ms. Palmer?
All right, I have like seventeen pages of notes here, so.
Okay.
Just kidding.
Number one.
First, I hundred percent agree that the best tool against absentee and absenteeism is engagement. Kids who want to be at school will find a way to get to school. There are barriers that prevent them, but that's a different conversation.
Right.
So, thank you for pointing that out. Engagement is an excellent tool when fighting absenteeism. I have one question and one comment. The question is, the ten percent goal of the state, does that relate to excused or unexcused absences or both?
That's both.
That's both.
That's, that's chronic absenteeism. So, chronic absenteeism is a combination of both unexcused and excused absences.
Okay, so that's not an attendance rate figure, that's?
They're looking to reduce their chronic absenteeism across the state. For example, ours is fifteen point eight for last year.
Right.
So, if I had to equate that to the state, let's just say that the state was fifteen point eight, their goal, long-term goal, is to be ten percent or below chronic absenteeism for both excused and unexcused absences combined.
So, follow-up question to that.
Yeah.
Do, do students with 504 plans that accommodate chronic illnesses and the absences relating to those, do those count against, towards chronic absenteeism?
No, because there's an indication that the school, no.
Okay.
They would not. That's a great question.
Okay. So, my thoughts are, you made a comment that we need greater communication from our parent community, and as I think the sole parent on the board right now, I'm with you on that, most of us are with you on that, but we have to ask for something in return, and that is some consistency. So, the point about excused versus unexcused, I'm glad to hear that you're going to be looking to work on some standards for that and, and maybe some processes. I, I implore you to include some parents in that conversation. The feedback that I've gotten from the community is that people want to comply and they get frustrated when the system doesn't match the policy. And a very specific example of that is, what are we on, day five? I logged into my son's system because he missed a day due to illness. He actually went to school and went home, and the system says unexcused. So, that doesn't align with his policy because it wasn't the full day, and it's not clear how I'm supposed to address that with the school.
No, that's a, that's a great question at the same time, is that the school needs to receive an indication as to why. It automatically will default to unexcused until an indication has come in to say that it is excused. So, in this situation, truancy, unexcused, is missing the school in its entirety, so.
Right.
Yeah.
I'm just saying that you have, we have a lot of conscientious parents.
Sure.
Who are, the people that, that are scared about the seven unexcused absences and, and having court involved are the people who are sending notes and trying, but they're worried. So, the communication piece, I think, needs to go beyond sharing the policy and sharing the how-to. So, for example, every school's website should have a prominent attendance link so that you, they know, some schools have a number, some schools don't, but as we develop this policy, we have to remember to keep communicating how we're working on it because the initial email genuinely startled a lot of people and they said, what, you know, it was not clear understanding of what it was going on. So, I'm going to speak for every parent in the county when I say, we'll do our best.
That's fine.
But it needs to be consistent.
I can assure you, your, your statement about being on the website and prominent and a link was heard by them as well as by myself. So, uh, because part of my attendance group back there, so.
Are they sitting together?
Yeah, they're all sitting. Yeah, no one wants to stand up here. But they, they are listening, so, and we need that feedback, but we're also meeting with our principals on Wednesday of this week to further that discussion, so. And I do agree with Dr. Baker, and, and I don't have, all kidding aside, I don't have a problem coming up here to go ahead and talk about where we're at in our current attendance policy, or our current attendance numbers is what I should say. And one thing to keep in mind is that while the state defines it as ten percent of the entire school year, essentially eighteen days for us, is that you'll have some students who will miss, it could be six days, the first sixty, you know, so, and they're already online for, you know, that chronic absenteeism or even greater than that. And that's really where the partnership with court services and our school social workers are instrumental to make sure that we can intervene for students with that. And I'm sure the state's intention on this is for us to intervene early at five, six, and seven as opposed to ten, fifteen, and twenty. So, but we'll continue at five, six, and seven and ten, fifteen, and twenty, and so on and so forth to work with those students.
I think that a big piece of the workload is going to be chasing down those notes and my, you know, if you include parents in your conversations at some point about how it works for them, it's going to, we're just going to do a better job of communicating.
Sure, and I will say, I will say this at the same time, the state does give the authority of the administrators at the school to, if they've received, for example, I'll, Ms. Palmer, I'll, I'll use you if that's okay. So, you could tell me that your daughter or your son happened to miss school, and, and it, let's say it was two days ago, and I contact you to say, you know, Ms. Palmer, your son or daughter has not brought a, a note in to me. I'm not quite sure why they happen to be out of school. You might be able to tell me they had a doctor's appointment or they didn't have, they were sick, but not enough to go to the doctor. As long as I've received indication, we're good. I need to receive that indication, which is vastly different. In, in our current poli, well, in our old policy, is that students were required to go ahead and bring a note on the day that they returned to school. This policy allows them three days in which to receive, uh, provide notification to the school as to why they missed school. So, essentially, when a student is, if we said every day that a student had to bring in a note after they were out and if they didn't bring that note, essentially, you're starting the process so much quicker. It could be they're on, okay, they're on their fifth unexcused absence at that point because they didn't bring the note that day. This allows them the opportunity to bring the note, and the administrators have the authority to remove an unexcused absence and make it excused. So, it really is a communication piece, and so what's, what's not lost on me or any of us here is to make sure that we are properly communicating with our community so that they feel an assurance that this isn't to get anybody, it's just to intervene. That's all.
Thank you so much.
Yep.
Ms. Shelley?
So, if a student gets to seven unexcused and the chins has been filed, what happens after that if they haven't gotten directly to court because it's going to take a little while? And then there's absence eight, absence nine, absence ten, and so on. Are we just, can, can you fill us in on that?
Sure, which is another great question. We will continue to implement our policy and that communication at number ten, the tenth absence, because at that point, a student is moving from that child in need of supervision, and really, there are two separate issues. You have the school issue and then you have the court side. The court's going to do their side, but it doesn't relinquish us from our duty and responsibility to make sure that that child has the interventions necessary that the school can provide. So, at ten, fifteen, and twenty, we'll continue with our communication. However, that communication is also going to go to court services at the same time to say that the child was at number seven, we've received no indication, and we're, we're just continuing to further document so that when the school social worker or that school administrator happens to go to court to go ahead and represent their school in regards to this student or this situation, they have backup documentation to say that this child in need of supervision or the chins petition was filed with court services on the seventh unexcused, and now we're at fourteen. So, but there is documentation that's provided within the reporting categories at the same time, again, to say that the interventions that were put into place are working, where the parent has refused, the student is no longer enrolled, or that the student, I'm sorry, I've listed them all, so that's it. So, I'm getting to know them as well, I think, I don't care. Yeah.
Any more questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries seven zero. Thank you, Mr. Wolf. On to 14.02, Budget Amendment Number Two. Mrs. Fennard and Ms. Colbert.
Good evening again. As a gap closing measure, in preparing for the FY '18 budget, staff recommended the elimination of 12 and a half positions, which included licensed and support staff positions. Currently, class sizes at several of the schools for the current 2017-18 school year are larger than originally projected. In order to meet staffing requirements and address some of the large class sizes, staff is requesting approval to increase the FY '18 Full-Time Equivalent, FTE, counts by six teaching positions. These positions will be funded by additional state revenue due to the actual average daily membership, or ADM, being higher than anticipated. Staff is requesting that the school board seek approval from the Board of Supervisors to approve an additional appropriation in the amount of $490,000, which will support the additional revenue receipts from the state. And it's administration's recommendation that the board approve the six additional teaching positions at the request of the Board of Supervisors to increase the school division's FY 2018 appropriation by $490,000, which will be supported by state revenues, additional state revenues.
I would like to make a motion for six additional staff members and the $490,000, which she said.
Motion by Ms. Shelley, second by Ms. Palmer. Any discussion? Ms. Shelley?
Thank you. That's all I have to say.
Fantastic. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries seven zero. On to 15.01, unfinished business. Mr. Braswell?
I just want to follow up from last board meeting and just make this general announcement that on the 23rd of September at Cortland High School, we have our 12th Annual Race Against Teen Violence. It's a race that we hold every year as a result of the death of my eldest son so that we can raise awareness of teen violence. I'm always very thankful to the Cortland staff for doing everything to be hospitable to us as we prepare for that event. And I just continue to invite all of Spotsylvania County schools to come out and celebrate a day of reflection, a day where we can bring awareness to this issue of teen violence. It is one day every year, no matter who you are, where you came from, how old you are. Everyone has a wonderful time. It doesn't matter if you're a real runner, a occasional runner, a walker, or just a watcher. There's something for everyone. So come on out and have fun. We still have the Friendly School Challenge, Elementary School Division, Middle School Division, High School Division. We're accepting applications. I went by, had an opportunity to drop off some at some of the other schools that, when I had, what I had available. And so we're encouraging you to participate in the Friendly School Challenge. As you all know, there is a substantial benefit to first, second, and third place. I will tell you that at Spotsylvania Middle School, they used it to build a new scoreboard for basketball. They built a rock climbing wall from their proceeds. Cortland High School, they used it to purchase football helmets and a variety of other good uses have been used from the money from the Friendly School Challenge. And we're just delighted that our sponsor finds education in this particular issue so valuable that they would offer this incentive to our, our students to come out and hear a word about this worthy initiative. So thank you, Spotsylvania County Schools. Thank you for the, to the administration for your continued support. And I look forward to seeing each and every one of you out there. I only ask that if I'm looking like I'm struggling as I'm running, don't laugh at me. Just give me a word of encouragement. Thank you.
Any more unfinished business? On to 15.02, new business. Any new business? Mr. Braswell?
Thank you. I have two pieces of new business. I'd like to ask staff to look at an opportunity to expand by at least one sport in middle school. For the longest time, in middle school sports, it's been the same here in Spotsylvania County. I know that there's been some interest for cheerleading, there's been some interest for other sports, I know field hockey and a few others. And so I'd just like to find out, get some background information as to what the cost would be for that, how well that would be received by our, our, our students, and, and how much pain that would cost our, our teachers to be able to put that together. So I'd just like to, if it's all right, the board asks that we ask administration to take a look at that and at an appropriate time, give us some information back so that we can look at that for future school years. So can we talk to that one first, or do you want me to mention both of them? Talk to that first? Well, I'm just asking the board if that's, I'm asking the board if they're fine with that.
Sounds good to me if that goes to the athletic force, Mr. Wolf.
I have one question. When you say one sport, we'd have one girl and one boy sport?
Yeah, yes.
Yes. Okay. Title nine. Okay. Just want to make sure.
Yes. And which one that would be, that's, you know, it's dependent on the level of interest. But I think some form of expansion is probably warranted. Okay. And then my other, my other issue is, is, and it's a little bit awkward, but I'm asking the board to restrain their efforts from asking staff for studies that are not originated from the board for consideration or from our board chairman. All of us are responsible for policy, but we act as a board. And to act out on our own, to seek information that the board does not have the opportunity to receive feedback on, in my opinion, is inappropriate. And so I'm asking the board not only to restrain from asking staff for that form of information, but I'm also asking the administration to not entertain requests from individual board members without approval through our chairperson or duly-elected leadership or this board as a voting body as a whole before those requests are, I guess, acted out on. My concern is, is that we as individual board members not tie the hands of staff with requests that prevent them from focusing on the main effort, which is the administration of our schools. And then we get caught into seeking out or doing work for groups that we don't receive the benefit of the intent of why they want information. So I, I mean, I could talk to more detail and more specificity if the board requested, but that's my request to the board that we follow our procedures. And if we have requests of the administration for information or studies or of that sort, that we go through our duly-elected board leadership so that we can be respectful of the administration and the work that they have to do. But also, I ask that the administration also restrain from providing any information that is not necessary, well, not necessary, but that is not approved through our board chair.
Any other comments? Dr. Meyer?
Madam Chair, one of the things that I think, I hope is still in the planning, we had talked about it when we had approved, when we had cut 12 positions from the budget, and we said that we would be looking for a report based on our September 30th so that it's tied to, as was presented this evening, enrollment, but also what are our encumbrances or obligations as of September 30th to see whether the amount of funds that we cut from the budget in order to have a balanced budget. So that report should be coming forth from staff through the superintendent, I would hope, for our first meeting in October. If that's not doable, then we need to know.
It's right on track.
Okay. Thank you, Madam Chair. Thank you, board members.
Any other new business? A motion to adjourn? Motion by Dr. Meyer.
Second.
Second by Ms. Shelley. All those in favor?
Aye.
We are adjourned.